Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Joden.
Here.
City Manager Harlow Schalk.
Here.
Commissioner Halliday.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Our regular commission meetings, June 7th, were received. Do we have any comments or questions or corrections? If not, the minutes will stand as submitted. Proclamation. City of Helena Proclamation. Whereas Juneteenth is the oldest known U.S. celebration of the abolition of the chattel slave system and the emancipation of enslaved African-American in Texas. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln made abolition a former position of the U.S. government when he announced the Emancipation Proclamation, which declared that enslaved people in the states of, in the states of or areas of rebellion against the United States would be free effective on January 1st, 1863. And whereas encouraged by the proclamation, large numbers of enslaved African-Americans self-liberated, escaping Chantel slavery to seek refuge behind Union lines. And whereas Confederate General-in-Chief Robert E. Lee surrendered to commanding general Ulysses S. Grant of the U.S. Army after the Battle of Aponomix Courthouse in Virginia, effectively ending the Civil War. And whereas June 19, 1865, U.S. Brigadier General Gordon Granger and his troop landed in Galveston, Texas, confirming the news that the Civil War had ended and that enslaved African-Americans were now free. Whereas celebrated on June 19th, it became an official national holiday known as Juneteenth National Independence Day by law on June 17, 2021. And now therefore I, Wilma J. Collins, Mayor of the City of Helena, Montana, do hereby proclaim the 23rd day of June 2021 as observance of Juneteenth National Independence Day 2021 in the City of Helena, Montana, and urge all citizens to take cognizance of this event and participate fitly in its observance. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and call to seal of the City of Helena, Montana, to be affixed this 18th day of June 2021. Wilma J. Collins, Mayor, Dana Clayborne, Clerk of the Commission. Consent Agenda Claims. Madam Clerk? Madam Manager, I apologize.
Mayor, good evening. I recommend you entertain a motion to approve on consent. The claims for June 7th, 9th, and 11th in the amount of $1,578,316.45.
I'll entertain a motion. Or is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I will move Consent Agenda Item A Claims.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Communications Proposals from Commissioners. Commissioners, you have the floor. Moving along. Report of the City Attorney.
Mayor, Commissioners, nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to make sure to share with all of you that the creative paint, painting program has received an application. The application has come in from the After School Teen Arts Council at the Holter Museum of Art. The application process does not have a review in front of the commission, but I wanted to make sure since this was the first time you'd seen that you would hear about this application, that you, you know it's happening and it's turning around pretty quickly. They've requested to do the painting on June 25th and 26th at the intersection of Fuller and Placer. Each corner of that block at the bulbouts will be assigned an earth sign, so it will be similar to air, water, earth, and fire on each of the corners. They will be assigned a separate one of each of those four, and they will paint a round of bulbouts, creative art that signifies each of those, those areas. They would like to use city equipment, signage, et cetera, for traffic control, and the Holter staff is responsible for traffic management. The paint is temporary and meant to be temporary. It will wear away with traffic use, but they hope it will last all summer. They're also planning to use outdoor house paint, and it is anticipated that farmers' market attendees along with members of the community are going to be participating, but the primary will be the Holter education staff. Also, the NTAC members have chose, that choose to participate can also do so. And one of the most important questions on the application is who in the community is asked and made aware of the events. So obviously, I wanted to make sure you knew this was coming, but also they have been working with ATAC along with NTAC, the farmers' market, and then other community members are invited to join the painting as it happens. That's the one item that I wanted to make share to you tonight. I share, make sure to share with you tonight, but I also have a presentation which I, I wanted to, and I provided a quick summary of making sure you all know that Mary Kragel from our Department of Commerce at the State of Montana was planning to come tonight and provide an update on the results of the census and economic information. Mary Kragel is the Bureau Chief for the Research and Information Service Bureau and the Census and Economic Information Center at the Department of Commerce. She has forwarded over, excuse me, she has forwarded over her presentation, and I believe the Clerk of the Commission has it available. She's also attending online and is prepared to do a quick presentation for you all on the current statistics in the City of Helena, Montana.
Thank you. You have the floor, Mary.
Thank you, Mayor Collins, members of the Commission, again, Mary Kragel. So delighted to be here with many of you who are dear friends as well as in colleagues. It's nice to see so many familiar faces and names. I would call this presentation actually a smorgasbord, so I'm going to kind of jump around from one little area to the next. So as we're going along, please, if you have questions, let's just make this a discussion. I first want to make sure everyone can see the presentation on the screen. Somebody nod their head saying yes. Great, perfect, thank you. If you have questions, let's just make this a discussion. I first want to make... Okay, ready to go. So first of all, I'm going to talk a little bit about the update on the census, where we are in the current release of the 2020 census information. Then I'm going to veer off that topic for a moment to talk about differential privacy. I think it's very important that all of you be aware of what to anticipate with the upcoming census and the information that's coming out. Third, I'm going to talk a little bit about our shop, CEIC, which is part of the Research Information Services Bureau, and what services we can provide to the City of Helena as well as any city, any public, any resident, anywhere in Montana. And then spend a little time with some questions and discussions. So currently, the update on the census. So the most recent 2020 census wrapped up in Montana in October. We patiently waited until April when the grand announcement was made that we had gained another congressional seat in the U.S. House of Representatives. I can tell you, this was a huge effort, a huge relief to me when that announcement came out. This pandemic did everything it could to disrupt every plan we had for the census. And we had at one point 600 different folks across the state of Montana assisting and helping get the census done. We had nonprofit, we had Western Native Voice, Montana Nonprofit Association, we had Forward Montana, we had every library in the state, we had Mako, we had Mida, we had, you name it, they were on board. And I can tell you, without all those efforts, we never would have made it. Montana, in gaining that seat, gained seat 434 by a margin of only slightly higher than around 6,300 residents, so of a count of over 1,085,000, it came down to 6,300. As you can see, Minnesota held a seat only by 26 residents, New York lost a seat by 89. I think, again, this points out the importance of the census and what it means for everybody to be involved and to encourage everyone to do it. So I appreciate the efforts of many of you on the, who did help. I recognize lots of faces that were very instrumental in this. And again, this map that is on this page shows you who gained seats in blue, Texas being the one that gained two seats, and then who lost seats in orange. The rest would then gray or in no change. And this map and other affiliated facts related to the apportionment are on our census website, ceic.mt.gov. So what's next with the census? Well, the Census Bureau is actually continuing to work on what is the, the big adjustment to the U.S. Census this time. So in the past, census information was kept, has always been kept private under Title 13. The U.S. Census Bureau has an obligation to keep information secure and every individual's identity secure. However, the census is taking an extraordinary step this time to add another layer of privacy, and this is to, to prevent what's called database reconstruction. In this area, this would mean that they would fuzzy the data using a statistical technique to the point where individuals' characteristics cannot be identified. Not anybody's name or identity, but literally their characteristics to the point where you could not take a census table, the group of 2020 census tables, and match it up against Facebook or some other form. I'm going to show you some examples, and you will see very quickly why, why does the City Commission of Helena care? Well, I'm going to show you why you care. So they're working on that algorithm. Just this past week, they talked about what they're going to do for the release, for the redistricting file, what level of what's, we're going to call it fuzziness. It's called the differential privacy system, but it's basically data fuzziness from stats that they're going to use. Currently, Alabama is suing. Alabama is suing against the DAS system. So the short answer to the census data is the redistricting file will be released on August 16th in order for the state of Montana and the Commission to do redistricting and also create that second congressional seat. Beyond that, nobody knows exactly when the information's going to come out because part of it depends on this lawsuit. So as I mentioned, August 16th will be the date you'll see the next census product. Apportionment was the first product. That was the counts at the state level that gave us the congressional seat. The next group of data, the redistricting data, will have data down below the state level, so the City of Helena will then see information that will be useful. This information includes everything that's important for redistricting, so that's population counts, that's racial makeup, and voting age population, so population above and below 18. That's all that's in the file. There won't be gender information, there won't be other age cohort information, there won't be other statistics, just housing units and the number, those, those key data pieces. And finally, when the data is released, it's going to require lots of review, and I think the City of Helena should start today, making sure that they don't have references in any city ordinances, city bylaws, anywhere to census information as a funding criteria in guiding programs, et cetera, because the DAS system is going to have an impact on that data. I've talked about this already, so I'll skip over that. That's just when the different, the rest of the data is due. So let's talk a little bit about differential privacy. Differential privacy is a mathematical model that basically it, it is used to decide if one person was included in the data, in a data set, what does that mean for the data? And if you took that record out or you modified that data, how much does it change the accuracy? What's critical to know is the 2020 census respondents were counted, they filled out their forms, none of that data is affected. No, this isn't changing the underlying data, all it is, is adding a layer of statistical fuzziness to the data. So think of it this way. So at, at zero level of fuzziness, you would have basically no way to, to see the underlying, the characteristics of the data underneath. For example, at zero epsilon, you couldn't tell how many people lived in Helena, you couldn't tell their characteristics, you wouldn't know their race. At 100%, you would know exactly who lived here, exactly everything about those people, et cetera. So the Census Bureau is somewhere in between going, deciding how much to add fuzziness to the data. And so why is this important? Well, what's important is what the fuzziness does to the data. So this is an example for Carter County, and you can see here that the, the lines in blue are what happens when the fuzziness, the DAS differential disclosure avoidance system is applied versus the regular data. And what you'll see here is that there's pretty dramatic shifts in a number of age cohorts. Why is this important? Well, as, as all of you as city officials know, this data is critical for planning, it's critical for funding, it's critical for all kinds of, of uses. And by having these large impacts, folks in Carter County might say, well, looks like we need programs for babies and for folks over the age of 85, when in reality, those numbers have been inflated because of the statistical noise that's been added, and other areas have been made much lower, like this cohort from 20 to 24. Again, what they are doing is they are adding just statistical noise to the data to mass characteristics. The smaller the population, the smaller the racial makeup, the more difficult it will be to sort of get, the more impact the DAS system is going to have. Have I lost you all yet?
Almost.
Okay. So let's look at some other key examples. So this is actually City of Haver. So this would be a great example of, of what the City of Helena is going to see. And again, what they did is they took the 2010 data as reported, so that's this column right here. So for Haver and Haver CDP, which is just the little edge of Haver on the edge, overall, their population was reported as 10,026, but because of the impact of adding the statistical noise, their overall population, had it been added at that time, would have been 73 people less. The same thing would have happened to Helena. The City of Helena, even though it had reported X number of people, the DAS system would have had an impact on the population. Every population group below the state level is affected. Doesn't matter where it is, every population group is affected below the state level. So again, looking at some of these combinations, you can see that because of this decline in population, it also had an impact across different racial groups. The data we're looking at right now is the 2010 data that the DAS system has been applied at a level of, epsilon level of 12.2. So this is the most recent product that the Census Bureau has put out. This is going to be very similar to what they will provide for redistricting. Redistricting, they've now set the level higher, but it's going to have the same kinds of impacts, where they're adding this fuzziness that's going to change some of the underlying, the way the data is like, has been in comparison to past years. Let's look at another example. So one of the things I've, in reading through the City of Helena's plans and other things, I see lots of discussion about urbanization and the shift from urban to rural. Again, because of the impact of DAS, you're going to see overall in Montana, a shift away from urban areas out into rural populations. One more time, we are not actually moving people out from urban to rural, it's just the impact of the statistical noise. So for Helena, in 2010, the, the urban area was reported as having a population of a little over 45,000. Because of DAS, that population now would have been reported as 44,910. Still with me? Anybody lost? Okay. So again, what, what's important about this is I think it will be necessary to really look at this data closely, to compare it to other census products that have been recent, like the American Community Survey, et cetera. And my shop and the economists over here at Commerce are glad to help you in the interpretation of this data. The only thing that's going to change this from happening is if something happens in the Alabama case. The Census Bureau has pretty much said, no, we're not, we're not backing down from this. This is what we're going to use to prevent information from being disclosed. In the past, what they did was they just swapped households, so that if I was the only person in an area that stood out from a racial characteristic, they would swap me with a household of similar type. This is the first time that the Bureau has ever used a mathematical technique adding fuzziness to the data. So shifting gears again. So what about the data? So where does it come from? So we at the Census and Information Center provide data all the time, everywhere, every level. Under Montana code, we are required to maintain economic, demographic, sociological, and geographic information for every part of Montana. So that's what my great staff do. There's three economists, a GIS specialist, a database person, and two business development folks over here at Commerce. And our job is to support every community in Montana in every way we can with the data we want. This is an example of our website. I'm actually was going to pull it up real quick. I might have to stop sharing and reshare, I'm not sure. Do you guys see the active website or not? Change pages? Okay, let me stop sharing and reshare. You see it now? Okay. So this is the apportionment page, map we had showed you initially. This is up on, on the main screen. Again, you can look at resident population, overseas population, other things related to apportionment. But what I want to focus on here tonight relative to the data is a couple of new products that we've just put out. So our area profiles provide you a look at every community in Montana and every statistic that we can think of that you guys might want to, want to know from census, various census products. So looking at the area profile table. You can pick any year from 2010 forward, and here's all the different topics. So I mean, everything from mortgages and occupation housing. So when I was looking at your recent community profile, what struck me is this would be a great place for you folks to compare very quickly to how does Helena look relative to any other place in Montana. And this again goes down to the place level. It also compares the state of Montana to other areas as well. So let's just grab, how about housing value? So this is an example of housing value. This is Beaverhead County. Again, you just pull down and find whatever area you want, pretty straightforward to use. Now it's Lake County. If you want a different levels, you've got county, nation, place, so let's pick place. Let's pick City of Helena. And there you go. So these are your average values right now based on the income levels, owner-occupied units, how much are the various, how, the values of those individual units. So the median household value at the time this was recorded is $244,000. I can tell you right now, the median household value of a house in Montana is now up to $293,000 and continuing to rise. We're watching that trend incredibly closely to see where that, where that's going to end us up. One other real quick one I want to show you from this site is our tourism database. So we also have a full-time economist that works on tourism. This provides you a look at Montana's spending, tourism dollars, where are they spending it? How's, how's it being distributed? Clicking on Lewis and Clark County, this will work. Provides you other information about specific locations. Again, I think this one's geography-wide. Oh, I didn't change it here, that's why. So that would be western. Yeah, so there you go. This is, so this overall look at the trends, and as you can see, not surprisingly, what happened post-COVID to our tourism travel dollars, et cetera. Our staff is able to help you as the Commission look at any of these data trends, interpret them, and also dig into questions you may have. So as you're looking at your community profile, let me, let us know where we can do to enhance, what we can do to show you relative, how Helena is performing relative to other areas. Going to stop sharing this and go back very quickly to the presentation and wrap up. With that, I would entertain any questions that anyone would have. Again, I really appreciate the opportunity just to give a brief overview of what we do. I had asked May to provide a copy of a recent update done by the Department of Labor that talks about what the impact on the economy was from the pandemic, Montana economy. I encourage you to reach out to the Department of Labor and Industry or the Department of Commerce anytime you can. We have pretty amazing folks that are glad to help and do whatever we can to provide the data you need.
Thank you, Mayor. Comments or questions from the Commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Commissioner O'Loughlin. Just a couple of questions, Mary, on sort of what we would take out of particularly the, just the way the census is, is using the data. I think about some of the things that we've been looking at. You mentioned housing as, as one of those issues, which I think we here are also grappling with, and thinking about how we use data to look at trends over time. This change that census is making, how, how can, so assuming that census continues in its route and the Alabama case doesn't go anywhere, what, what can we do to sort of at least take a step back and say, okay, what, what are we actually seeing with this data? And what, what is it potentially not telling us about, you know, trends that are happening in our community?
Absolutely. Commissioner O'Loughlin, that's an excellent question. So it does indeed make a what they call longitudinal break in the data in the series, because in the past, they've never used fuzziness. Because in the past, they've never used fuzziness. So now that they're using differential privacy, this does change the data from anything that's been collected before. The good news for housing units is housing units is the only piece of data that is not fuzzied. So housing units are actually continued invariant at every level. The number of housing units that you will see coming out of the 2020 census for Helena will be the number that they actually counted. Or for Montana, or for any of the smaller places or legislative districts across Montana. Housing units will be fine, but every other data, especially population data, will have that that level of masking applied. What my recommendation is, is been two things. Number one is to plan now and start looking at data trends that are going to be critical to you to make future decisions. So for example, if there's specific programs towards young children for Helena, look at that trend for now. Hold that information for those years. Luckily, you can get it all off our site. We're happy to provide it. And then what we can help you do is then interpret what does the data, when the data comes out, how much of a fuzziness has been applied? There are going to provide, the US Census Bureau is going to provide metrics. And I didn't, I don't know if you, actually, I can go back and show you. They're going to provide metrics on how accurate the previous, the data is. We also do that. So in these numbers, we are actually showing, if it's in yellow, it's not very accurate. If it's in blue, it's pretty accurate. So what's the level of estimate? We will continue to do that. That will also help guide you as the numbers come out. But the short answer, Commissioner Loughlin, is it's going to take some effort to plan. It's going to take some effort to analyze the data to try to figure out what the shift is from the actual count itself versus what is a shift because of the application of differential privacy.
Do you have any other comments or questions from the commission?
Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mary, for your presentation. Very much appreciate the partnership that your team and all of the members of Commerce have offered to Helena. Reaching out and evaluating not only the community profile, which is now a part of the budget document, which all of you have received. It's an opportunity to take that community profile and identify areas that you believe are really important. Just based on how this budget goes and what you might find as important data sets. Then we can flag those moving forward with Mary and any of the fuzziness that we would be concerned with that outside of those housing units might become really important to future decision-making so we can start keeping those those data sets for Helena. The other part of the work that we've been doing with Mary is around economic development and understanding the relationship between what we have in Helena, our our housing, as well as obviously the cost of living, but also the cost of, the amount of work that needs to be put into economic development overall. So their team has been really helpful. We don't have an economic development team, so we've been relying quite a bit on their work. And I really appreciate the time they've offered up. So thank you for this moment on the agenda. That's all of it.
Absolutely. Glad to, anytime. And like I said, just reach out. We have folks that can make GIS. We have industry development folks that can help advise you in terms of what industries might work here in the Helen area, what won't. We are going to be adding quite a few more new subscriptions to our website and including a revitalization of the state site selector that will include not only all the multi-listing service data, but also commercial real estate data as well. So that's what we're here to do, is to revitalize Montana, to help communities grow in smart ways and to provide the accurate data you need and be able to be experts at that data so that you are guided well in your decisions. So again, thank you all. So good to see so many of you and look forward to future presentations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, I'm, thank you, Mayor.
Communications from Helena Citizens Council, Representative Colleen Murphy. Excuse me? Please.
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Colleen Murphy. I'm the HCC rep for District Three. We've done a lot of work on the budget and you've had the report from HCC presented. That's been our several months worth of work. We're meeting this Wednesday via Zoom. The city manager, Harlow Shock, is that how you say the last name? Thank you, Shock, is coming to give us a mid-year update and we look forward to that. We're going to be focusing on goals, objectives, and planning for the coming year at this meeting and I would imagine several others. We have the filing for HCC positions closed today. As of Friday, we had three people running in District One, two in District Three, three in District Four, one in District Five, and zero in District Six. So we can still take applications for appointments and that would be on our city, our city HCC website. So that's all I have to report.
Comments or questions from the commission? Thank you, Representative Murphy. Regular items. Consider a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing fund to Placer Commercial LCC for the construction restoration of 38 pairs of French doors window at 21 North Last Chance Gulch. Madam Manager. Or?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just, the microphone system, making sure I hit the right button. So this is a resolution for your consideration to distribute funds through the tax increment financing funds within the district to the Placer Commercial LLC for construction and restoration of 38 pairs of French door windows at 21 North Last Chance Gulch. Ellie is here. Ellie Ray is our city planner too, and she is here to answer any further questions you might have on that application.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to see you all in person. So as was mentioned, this is a proposal for a resolution for repairing 38 pairs of front door windows at the Placer condominium building. This historic structure has these windows on the second floor of the property and they are all in varying states of deterioration and therefore are in need of some TLC, some historic preservation work. This proposal, as written, does meet with State Statute 7154288 in that it relates to the costing incurred with connection of, in connection with the redevelopment activities of the property. Additionally, it does align with the downtown urban renewal district plan, which has established goals to upgrade underperforming properties and to create a quality and unique experience in the district. And further, the plan sets forth goals that speak to promoting adaptive reuse of buildings, including making safety improvement measures, facade improvements, and capitalizing on the downtown's historic assets. So as such, it conforms with the plan and state statutes. Did want to note that with this application, there is no match funding that has been presented for the application. At varying times over the course of a number of meetings with the board, the applicant, which happens to be a board member who recused himself from the voting on the application, did speak to the fact that they haven't yet, and to my understanding, and maybe he's on the call on Zoom and can speak to this further. But I understand that they have not sought any additional match funds from different nonprofit foundations or from private banks. It was brought up a number of times that perhaps they consider creating some sort of capital stack to serve as a match for this. Alternatively, there were, you know, options to consider providing them with some match funding once they had brought some money to the table and that they could work on the window replacements and iterative process. But ultimately, this is brought forward because they feel it's a public health and safety concern. And generally, that's how historic structures in different TIF districts across the state have been able to make repairs on their buildings. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I am not certain if the applicant Lee Schubert is present on the Zoom call to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Do we have the applicants on Zoom or present in the chamber?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Schubert is online.
Okay. Comments or questions from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few. So I was a little bit confused in the application and then in some of the discussion of them in the minutes. Are all of the doors original or some of them have been, are not original?
Mayor and Commissioner, I believe that they are all original, but I will defer to the applicant on that.
Okay.
Go ahead, Lee. You have the floor.
Oh, not all of the doors are original.
Follow up, how many are?
I don't know.
About 15 or 20.
15 or 20 are original. Others have been repaired. Or replaced.
In the 70s.
In the 1970s during urban renewal. So the doors are 50 years old, at least. The non-original doors are at least 50 years old.
Okay. I have a couple more questions. So my other question, to say, if Ellie, you might know this. Do you know if the city owns the facade like it does the Coldwell Building, the power block in the Montana Club?
Mayor and Commissioners, I will again defer to Lee, but my understanding is that the building is all privately owned by Placer Commercial LLC. I'll defer to Lee to correct me on that statement, but I will note that the building is on the National Historic Register.
Yeah, we don't know of any exterior ownership. The Placer Commercial owns the ground floor and the second floor. The Placer Condominium Association owns floors three through seven. And the condominium association also owns Placer Commercial. So they're intertwined.
Okay. And then I guess my last question for right now. Was anyone, was anyone at SHPO or the the city-county heritage preservation officer consulted, I guess, when you started talking about the materials and methods of, you know, this repair and kind of the history of the repair of the facade, particularly with?
Yes, we have, we have, I won't say coordinated, but we have talked with that. And by the way, there was a supplemental request for funding made to the Montana History Foundation and that application was declined. And that was noted in an amendment that was filed several months ago.
Okay, so we don't, but we don't have a memo from, I guess Pam or SHPO then, on the project?
Mayor and Com-
I had an estimate from Preserve Montana. Mary Webb, yes, proposing to making a bid for the work. And it was not, it was not the lowest bid by far.
Do you want to ask your question again, please?
Mayor and Commissioners, there was no such memo that was provided with the application submitted on behalf of Placer Commercial.
Okay, great. That's-
There was an amendment filed, I can tell you that. I know that. It may not have been associated with the application, but it was filed.
What was filed?
The amendments noting that an application had been made to the Montana History Foundation for funding.
Thank you, Lee.
For matching funds, yeah.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
I have a question for Ms. Ray. So I'm hoping that maybe you can just give me a refresher on where things sit with the TIF district. And my understanding was, we're going to do a year, you know, we knew that COVID sort of, there was adjustments to what priorities for the, for the TIF district. And then there was a goal of sort of doing kind of more strategic planning, sort of what what are the, what are the big visions that we want to see in investing this increment into the district? Can you give me a refresher on where we sit on, you know, doing sort of that bigger sort of strategic planning with this body?
Mayor and Commission, to date, that process has not yet taken place. What I can tell you with respect to the TIF funds as well, by way of an update on that, with this application, all of the funds that are currently in the accounts with the city for that district would be expended. But they have not yet had an opportunity, is my understanding, to sit down and have that strategic planning exercise so they can prioritize areas for investment in the district and recommend them to you.
So maybe just a follow-up, Mayor? I just would be helpful to kind of get your perspective on this. So I think there's like two approaches that we can take. One is to just fully spend down the increment in this, in this year. The other is to sort of save and kind of begin to build a fund, to sort of think about longer-term projects, potentially to bond or, you know, whatnot. I'm just wondering, from your perspective, and again, like with the direction that this advisory board has been given or the parameters around it, is this the type of project that we should be considering at this juncture? You know, given that they haven't done that strategic planning? Or, you know, in your mind, when should we start to really think about, you know, building a fund and thinking about potentially some, some bigger projects out of this fund?
Mayor and Commissioners, that one is a difficult question to answer. I would say that certainly you have options of expanding the funds you have for the applications presented. There are no other ones that have immediately been presented. I think that's in part due to the fact that this would again expend all the funds. I think that there might be additional applications that are waiting in the wings to see what happens this evening. I've had one or two calls related to that in recent weeks. So there is the possibility that there are other eligible applicants out there that might have different projects that could make utilization of the funds that we have. So there's a balance there between, I think, considering whether or not this project in your mind is eligible on its face from that historic preservation, public safety and perspective of providing better egress ingress to the building on that second story. But as far as the process is concerned with respect to doing that strategic planning, that's certainly an exercise that I think worked very successfully with the railroad TIF district. And I think that there's merit to taking care of that. And also in meetings starting in the fall, I believe it was December, the downtown TIF Advisory Committee were looking at making amendments to the application to recommend that there be a match component required up to 50% with the wording up to 50%, provided that there is an exemption for hardship. And per the minutes from that meeting, Community Development Director Haugen did actually note that under a state statute, financial hardship is not allowed to be considered as hardship in that case. So a couple of things to balance and weigh out, I would say, in response to your question.
Yeah, and Mayor, I mean, your, your response sort of queues up just another thought in my head about, given that there are potentially other demands for these funds, is really thinking about a more systematic way of, do we need to sort of time when applications come in so that both the advisory board and we as a commission have really a full sense of what the demand and opportunities are for this funding? So maybe something to keep in mind for the future. But that's, yeah, helpful to get your perspective. Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Ray, the TIF board was comfortable moving, moving forward with this, correct?
Mayor, Commissioner Logan, it was voted yea, eight yays and one nay and one abstention, the abstention being Lee himself. So one member of the board objected to this project. And he might be present on the call as well. It's Riley Tubbs. And in reviewing the minutes from that meeting where they were just, one of the meetings where they was discussing this application, he had stated that he felt in large part that this was more of an HOA issue since it is privately owned property. issue since it is privately owned property. This isn't a nonprofit, this is a, an LLC that has ownership of the units. And the qualifier that Lee Schubert provided to that was that while it is privately owned and under an HOA, that these are actually leased units. So to balance that with considerations. And again, with respect to trying to find match funding and capital stacking for this project, I don't know if they have had an opportunity to look at private funding through a bank, which they've done previously on other restoration efforts for the building. So don't know if that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Ray? What part does the HOA plays in the funding?
Mayor, I would defer to Lee, but my understanding is that they themselves would undertake seeking private financing through a bank if it, the need should arise. And absent that funding, that they estimate this will take sixteen years to take care of all the repairs for the windows.
Lee, would you answer that, please? Lee?
Yes, I mean, we'll have to do one window at a time. We don't have leverage to borrow money at this point in time. Therefore, it, it's going to either have to come out of pocket on a, on a drip basis, or there will be the grant. Let me also point out that the other TIF awards that have been made were made to private enterprises as well. So we're not alone here as being a private enterprise. The other grants included private enterprises.
My question was, what part is the HOA playing in funding?
None at this point. They don't have any money. If they had the money, they might participate. But otherwise, it's going to have to be paid out of cash flow from Placer Commercial. As a, one window at a time, yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commission?
I do have a, a comment in, well, actually a question than a comment. And I don't know if this is for Ms. Ray or Lee. I know that we've, when we approved the BID budget, it included money for facade improvement. Did, has, have they gone for that money?
Mayor and Commissioner, I do not believe that that is something that Placer Commercial have entertained as of yet.
And there's a $5,000 limit there. So it, it would cover one or two windows at best.
But you, you didn't apply, is that correct?
No, we have not applied. We didn't think we qualified.
Mr. Mayor, just a, a comment. I'm, so one thing that I know would have been helpful for me, and I'm wondering if maybe we can hold this for a little while, but in for a memo from the preservation, historic preservation officer and/or comments from Shippo, I think, would be really helpful, particularly of, you know, impact and then also just, you know, materials and methods and, and other things we need to be considering, given that this does spend down the rest of the money if we were to fund the full amount. And also, maybe at that point, we will have more of a timeline of what the TIF district is actually looking at in terms of their strategic planning and the rest. I'm not opposed to this project, but I don't feel like I have all of the information that I would need, you know, to make a really good case of spending almost $80,000 right away. So that's just some thoughts that I have and wondering if we can get that, if, if there is consensus to maybe hold this for right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, question for Mr. Schubert. Did you, we, we got from the same TIF meeting, four total applications, three came in about a month ago, yours came in tonight. Did you all ask for this to be held until this evening?
No, not at all. And in fact, my application was the very first application filed with the TIF. So it got deferred at a later date by the, by your commission, yes. You deferred consideration of this because you wanted to refer it to the city attorney and you wanted to refer it to the fire department.
Gotcha. I know, I know the commercial condo portion of the Placer has gone through some financing issues, solvency, I'll say, over the last few years. Can you, can you talk a little bit about sort of what it means to try to rent these commercial spaces in an aging infrastructure building, your square footage costs, how you try to build that into a capital plan and compete with new builds, say, outspread, spread through the community sprawling outward, that might be cheaper on a square foot basis. And what it does to you to attract tenants and be able to capitalize if you don't get some sort of historic preservation assistance from the city?
Yeah, I mean, the condominium association bought the space about two years ago now, September of 2019. And the, the, the space was in distress, had been on the market for many years. We purchased it, we being the, the Placer Condominium Association. And, I mean, we faced the same problems everybody else faces in leasing property and space downtown. Yeah, so we invested money. I mean, the individuals in the condominium association, condo unit owners contributed money to make this transaction to the purchase of Placer Commercial occur because it was in distress and it was dragging down the entire building. Yeah, it's all voluntary management. The whole thing is run without any paid employees except for the maintenance people. And we have, well, we have an office manager for the condominium association, but she works four hours a week and her, her primary salary comes from the condominium association, not from the commercial side. Commercial is all volunteers in the building. You know, I volunteered to do the application. And yeah, we're trying to make it go. This is, this is intending, trying to preserve a historic building in the downtown area of Helena. And that's the, that's the main goal here. So nobody's taking a salary. This is all volunteer.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments? Madam Manager, Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands. I have no written public comment with the online participants.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Okay, Commissioners?
May I have a question for Director Haugen or, or Ms. Ray? I don't know which one. Regarding replacement of the proposed windows, we have a historic preservation ordinance goes through the process if it's deemed to be making, I think it's a substantial change. I'm not sure I'm getting the language exactly right. Does this proposal not trigger that ordinance? What's, what's the story there?
May I hop in on that to note that this is a restoration, it's not a replacement?
Excuse me, Mr. Lee, I mean, Mr. Schubert. Commissioner Halliday is speaking.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, as I understand your question, this is qualifying our demolition ordinance with regard to building of our major alteration. Because this is primarily smaller repair, it doesn't hit the threshold for that demolition ordinance. I did want to add some additional information to Commissioner O'Laughlin's question. The board, in their discussions, did not, chose not to prioritize this for sure of TIF money because they wanted to get out the money because of COVID and other issues. They do intend this fall to start prioritizing and reexamine how they're handing out their money. They would like to prioritize. They have a better sense of the types of projects that have been interested and the type of need out there. So yeah, that is in their plans this fall to start better prioritizing their money. Their goal this year was to get the tax income money out, show that there are investing in the community. So that was their stated goal at a couple of their meetings. I don't know if that helps, but was their intent. I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
Mr. Mayor, I have a follow-up regarding the demolition. So Ms. Haugen, the, the applicants represented to us that if we don't approve this, right, and they have to price it out over the next, say, sixteen years, one by one, some window is going to fail here or there, something will get broken. If they chose to, say, just go buy the cheapest vinyl they could at, at Home Depot and slap it in there, it's not going to trigger the historic demolition ordinance or scrutiny? Is that what you're telling me?
No, what I'm telling you is that it didn't fall under the historic demolition permit. However, as indicated by Mr. Schubert, they are listed on the National Historic Register. So any repairs that they make that affects that in either Shippo's opinion or our historic preservation officer's opinion, for example, switching out, I won't say Anderson, but home de, windows they purchase at Home Depot to that will dramatically affect their designation as a historic place. It may also impact in the future, they might have ability to hit historic tax credits or similar types of things. So yes, there, even though it technically doesn't fall on our ordinance, there's certainly because of its current status as a historic place, it, there's very definite limitations what they can do without impacting that.
So are they not limited based on what the proposal they're making here is? Well, you just told me the bill, bill of check, right? They're going to go put in vinyl, someone's going to check and say, no, you can't do that. So their, their decision to swap out, say, thirty-eight windows here, is that triggering some sort of inquiry to?
Well, that's what we're gonna, I'm gonna ask a specific question to Pam to see if that affects her. Because they are looking at historic restoration architect is going to swip, is going to do the repair on the windows. And they're using the techniques that are recognized by the National Historic Register. Our chances are that it will not impact that. But we will make that, we will contact Shippo to make sure that determination is there. What I'm just saying does not impact our demolition ordinance as written currently.
Gotcha. So we could just simply make it, say, contingent on actually complying with Shippo, right?
That is correct, if that is the commission's desire.
Madam Manager, you had a?
No, thank you, Mayor. I was intending to follow up with that contributing, the elements within the building themselves as being contributing to the historic nature. One part, and then the second part of the, the actual windows, windows, of course, are always very important to Shippo. And having an S, a Secretary of Interior trained architect is fantastic, is that it is intended to ensure the preservation in the long run. So as long as that's approved. But we have, we have not, from what I understand, required before that Shippo approve in advance and any of the work or approve the type of work we're doing in advance of us making an award. So I'm not aware of that unless we have in the past. This would be the first, this would be precedent.
Director Haugen?
Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, to date, the TIF money that we've done has primarily been for sidewalks. And for, if you remember, the stage and the trees. So they aren't directly affecting any building with regard to that falls into Shippo. So to this date, we haven't referred. We do, however, have an open invitation and do invite the historic preservation office, and they have weighed in on occasion, for example, for the stage, the impact on the potential park. So we do invite them to participate in the meeting. And they do have a representative on the TIF Advisory Board. Unfortunately, that representative often does not come.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, I, I guess, and I have one other question, too. So I haven't been able to find, and from my understanding, it is a contributing property to the Helen Historic District, which is on the National Register, correct? It's not actually, it's a contributing property, not on the register?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I, is my understanding that it is on the National Historic Register. Districts have two types of properties, primary and contributing. I understand this is a primary to the district, but I'm certain Mr. Schubert has done that, if you want to ask him. That is something we'll verify through Pam or through the Shippo office.
I think, and I don't know if there would be interest from the rest of the commission, but I would be interested in getting some information from Pam Matardo before making a motion for this TIF amount.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no written public comment or hands raised online.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
May I just ask one more question to Ms. Haugen, just following up on, on your comments? So I understand that for the first year, there was a, a goal of, of trying to get some of this money out the door to show, you know, it's the, the increments value. How did the staff commute? So, so we also heard today from Ms. Ray that there are some other potential projects that are eyeing this money. How is that information communicated with the advisory board? Or is it communicated to the advisory board?
Right now, we try, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, right now, we, unless we know an application in front of us, we can only tell them about potential projects. We do know that, for example, the people working on the independent record have indicated openly and during the course of a meeting, that they may be interested. Other than that, we really haven't had any direct inquiries. But to answer your question, in addition, we do put on our website and we do make available through the HBID and through other means that there is TIF money available. It just so happened, and if you recall, the proceeds from this TIF this year turned out less, primarily because of CenturyLink. And hopefully those increments will increase, this texture, at least we're hoping, will do with that. So yeah, we do have, they did have quite a bit of discussion with regard to what their broader scope is, but they didn't have a lot of interest and they were trying very hard. They started out with the stage and I think sanitizers, I think were the first two that they did to identify what projects they could do to show that there was going to be investment in the downtown. Now that COVID is over, some of those immediacies are no longer apparent in their mind. And the chairman and I have had conversations, but also the whole board, is that they now are more willing, now that they've had a year under their belt, to start talking more about priorities with regard to, and what would be more strategic about opening the money. If we recall, we had kind of a quick and rough start for that board because of COVID. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Mayor, I will just say, I mean, I think my, my, I, I understand that there's potentially some, some more follow-up with the preservation office, and I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I'm, I guess, less, less concerned, I mean, I think they're going to have to go through what the process is to meet the preservation, you know, as a historic building. In, in my mind, the TIF, the increment funds are really meant to be invested in ways that can help sort of build the increment over time. In my mind, I mean, I, I think I agree with potentially the, just based off of the minutes, the individual who, who raised some concerns about how this project aligns with the goals of, of the, of the TIF district. I, I would, you know, I'd be comfortable in considering, again, it seems like the, the route that potentially the advisory council is going is to think about also requiring a match. And so looking at providing an allocation of, of half of what is requested is another potential route. But again, if there is a desire by the commission to seek more information from the preservation office, I'm comfortable tabling it today. But I, I do want to say, given that it sounds like there may be other projects out there, I think it is worth really asking the staff to really give us a holistic look about what, what is potentially out there and how this project does or doesn't align with, with the goals of the advisory or of, of the TIF district.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just say, you know, I, Mr. Mayor, I'll just say, you know, I, I think this is sort of an unfortunately unfortunate timing situation. You know, we gave away 150,000 in TIF funding about a month ago. Between the Seeley Building, the, the building across the street, I think it's the new architect's building from the Bagel Company. And I don't even remember what our third one was at this point, Ms. Hagen.
Conservatory on the Shrine, the Shrine.
That's right, the Shrine. So, so we, you know, we did all of that without blinking on a consent agenda. That was part of the reason I asked why this one was left off. Sort of, sort of out of worry that we were going to sort of all become fiscal hawks the moment we had one standalone project. While we didn't even talk about that, that $150,000 of spending. You know, all of these were, at least the, the 75 that we spent, plus the, the money that we spent on the sidewalks at the Seeley Building, you know, you're talking about New Build For Profit Ventures, whether it's New Build in the downtown area, whether it's sprawl development on the edges of Helena. Anyone who's dealt in downtown property, the Blaster being a prime example, knows that your costs of doing business are significantly higher. That commercial space was near defunct. I think it was actually either in foreclosure. They're going to have to place that property at rates that it's just cheaper and easier for a lot of people to go rent new commercial space, right? You get nicer fixtures. You don't have to deal with pigmarole. You don't have to deal with the idea of opening up a wall and finding out that everything in there is lead or asbestos and deal with the city permitting process. When we subject these historic buildings like this to an increased process, not only do we add costs that they have to pass on to renters, right? Which means that they don't have more money to then fix those windows that are single pane and they're bleeding money out the eyeballs with regard to efficiencies, costs of heating, costs of lighting. But we're also just subjecting them to a greater, harsher regulatory scheme. I don't think we would have had this level of scrutiny had this been paired with the others. And it just worries me that tonight we're, we're subjecting this project to different scrutiny than we did three weeks ago, four weeks ago. To hide approve this, I would do it tonight. I would do it without any further Schiphol review, except to the extent it would be in the normal process, because I think, I think it comportes what we've done. Do I think we need a better system overall for these? Do I think we need a more comprehensive plan for next year? Absolutely. But, but it, it seems like we're making it harder for the Blaster to do business.
Now, what was it left out?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, the question rose within the TIF advisor group, whether or not this was an eligible activity. So we had to confer with the city attorney. And I don't recall that we had to also confer with the fire department, but they also did weigh in to ensure that it was. There were some members of the TIF advisory group, even though staff brought it forward, that felt it was eligible. So we felt it was better to do that additional due diligence and to move the other three forward, where we had that input from the city attorney.
And what was that input?
The input was from the city attorney is that he felt that it was an eligible TIF activity, so.
Including the fire department?
The fire department was a separate issue, but the fire departments, you know, would indicate that any improvement to that building would be an increase in safety, so.
Thank you. Any other final comments before we move forward? Okay, we have a multitude of answers here. And so we'll move forward with the resolution. And if it passes, great. If it doesn't, also, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I would move to approve a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Plasher, Plasher Commercial LLC for the construction, restoration of 38 pairs of French door windows at 21 North Last Chance Gulch.
Second. It's been moved and seconded.
Mayor, I'd like to amend that motion.
Let's hear it.
I'd like to move to amend the motion to reduce the amount by half, so reduce it to 38,900.
Second.
And Mayor, if I can just make a comment?
Go ahead.
So I definitely appreciate Commissioner Halliday's comments. And I think coming up with a better system that we're looking at these applications in a holistic way makes a lot of sense. I'll, I'll just respectfully disagree that I, I think this one, I, I, I think I would have scrutinized if it came in front of us with the others, just given the type of project it is. We can disagree about how best to use the, the TIF dollars. But this one does feel different. And I think we saw that reflected in, in some of the comments by, by our advisory committee as well. So I think it's, it makes sense to, to provide half with a goal of matching. You know, there's nothing to say if we ultimately have additional TIF dollars remaining that they, you know, couldn't come back for an additional allocation. Again, if the commission decides to, to allocate the full amount, that's their prerogative. But I think I'm, I'm comfortable with really asking, asking the applicant to, to, to meet a match. Thanks.
Okay. One final question, Director Hagen. I heard you write when you said that the TIF advisor committee approved this.
And that is correct.
Thank you. That was seconded? Madam Clerk?
So we'll be taking a roll call vote on the amended?
Correct.
Commissioner Halliday?
No.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
No.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
No.
The motion fails two to three.
So we go with the?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'm wondering, so really quickly, I'm on the NPS National Register site. And I, I think it is just a contributing property. It's not its own registration. Cause I cannot find it on here. And so I'm, I'd like to make an amendment to amend the motion to pending review by the historic preservation officer for its completeness. Because what, everything that's in here, I, I don't necessarily think we have all of the information as to the scope of the project either.
Go ahead with your amendment.
Okay, so I would ju, I would just move to amend a, pending a memo by the historic preservation officer. Confirming the scope of what's been presented.
Do we have a second? There isn't a second. We'll move forward with the resolution. So. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, for the original, the original motion made by Commissioners Logan and seconded by Commissioner Halliday. Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just really briefly a comment, just following this. I think in the future, when we do get these, I think it would be really helpful for the, for the ones that have to do with historic properties that we know more information would be valuable. It would be really helpful if we could get that from the historic preservation officer. Just because I want to support these type of projects, but I also want to make sure that we have all of the information and, and the accurate information in front of us.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll echo that also.
I would just say, Mr. Mayor, if we're going to do that for someone, it, it probably, we probably need a process and it would probably need to be incumbent on the city to do that, not putting it on the property owner like here where we're dinging them for not coming in with a memo from their historic preservation officer, where they're not required to, and it would be found in the process for building. That would actually require them to make the determination of whether it's violating the, the contributing ordinance, right? So if we're gonna say to them, you know, shame on you for not getting that historic sign off, that's us. We need to pay for that in that requirement enforced, right? Have the, the historic preservation officer, have Schiphol come in and do that analysis. Otherwise, we're sort of dinging people extra and above what's required.
But I think that's, that's what Commissioner Dean was saying. That is exactly what she was saying.
That's correct, Mayor. And I just add too, I mean, this is be, I mean, obviously Helena's history is what, I mean, we strongly and highly value that. And so ensuring that we are, that we are preserving that in a manner that, that honors that history, I think is really important. And so I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. And, and the mayor, yep, you're correct in what I was saying, yep.
Thank you. All right, we'll move along. Public hearings. Consider a resolution suspending the prohibition of consumption of alcoholic beverages and possessions of open containers of intoxicating beverages on city property within the downtown urban renewal district for events taking place on July 16 and 17, 2021. Madam Manager? Or City Attorney Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. This item was a continuation from our last commission meeting. And the reason for its continuation, as I recall, was around the need for this suspension based upon the ability of the applicant to receive the insurance necessary to complete the permit for the event. As a result, you had asked that I do the research and find out if that, that insurance is made available. I shared the information as was researched and provided to both you, the mayor, and also the applicant. I did receive a follow-up call from the insurance company who had shared that the applicant was concerned because they are not the ones actually distributing the, the alcohol, that they would have to be responsible for that insurance coverage. And as a result, they had shared at the insurance company that there is event host insurance available, which is offered oftentimes in our neighborhood parties, for example, where those, those block parties take place and while there be a, a specific sponsor or host person, that those individuals may not actually be business distributing, but they also receive that insurance. So I was assured that that was made available. As I, I had followed up with our team today and asked if they would triple check whether or not the insurance had been submitted as a host and that had not. So as a result, the opportunities on the table and continues to be in order for this event to maintain the outdoor consumption of alcohol outside of those businesses in which the alcohol is consumed for the event, this resolution would be necessary. Thank you, Mayor.
I think you lost me, the Madam Manager, for the last.
In order for the event to have open containers, they do not have the insurance. And in order for that to happen, the commission needs to pass this resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
Just follow-up questions. So in order for the applicant to get the event host insurance, we, this has to be passed tonight. Is that accurate of what you've just described?
Thank you, Commissioner, Mayor and Commissioners. No, the applicant can receive the insurance. They have not and have not provided it. The resolution still remains on the table because they have not completed that application process with the insurance. This, and if, if you all, as a commission, want to continue to have and support open container for the event, you would have to approve this resolution. If you don't, then we have to deny the permit until they get the insurance.
Do we have the applicant on?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hamm is on. Give me just a moment.
Mr. Mayor, members of the question?
Okay, yes. Thanks for being on. My question to you is, the manager just informed us about a host insurance.
That has never been presented to me at all in my three conversations with Wendy at Payne West. The first conversation I had with her, she had informed me that the city was still telling her that I had to get insurance as if I was a vendor. I specifically told her I didn't want to vend so that the businesses downtown would be able to vend since they pay taxes year round. She said, oh, good point, and was going to get back with me. She has not gotten back with me when I called her today, this morning at 8:00 AM, because I realized I hadn't heard from her in a week. I got her voicemail. I left her a voicemail. I have not gotten anything from anyone that says that I could do a host. This is a type of insurance I've never heard of before. I'm happy to follow up with it, but we're coming up on this event, which is going to be a very big event and a huge financial impact for the city. We need to get this done. I'm happy to get insurance for having the parade, for having the rally and for having the party, but I am not the vendor for alcohol. And we need the open container so that the people who do vend alcohol can send people out to enjoy the drag show and the street party. And they all have insurance for their alcohol vending. This should not be a problem. It's a pretty straightforward thing. I'm not sure who has been telling the city manager that they've been following up and giving me information, but I've had literally no return calls from anyone at the city or emails. I've also had nothing from Wendy, but I'm sure it's because she's busy trying to figure out what exactly she's supposed to be doing, because there seems to be some miscommunication between us. But to be clear, I do not want to vend alcohol. I just want to make a big party happen and I would like the businesses that are downtown, that have all agreed to be a part of this, to be able to do their business straightforward. And I'm happy to get the group insurance for having a large group, as per usual, just as if it was an alcoholic. If you guys give me the okay to go ahead with the open container.
Madam Manager, what does the host insurance entail?
Mayor? The insurance called me, company called me as a result of a conversation with Mr. Hamm, who had shared that they are not a vendor and they do not believe they need to be getting the insurance. And I said that that was a common occurrence, that there are hosts, that people host events and others spend. And to that, they said, they responded to, oh, we have host insurance. And I said, thank you. Can you please send information to both Mr. Hamm and I for that host insurance? I haven't received that information either. That was last week. That does not mean, and I have to tell you, that all other events have not received that same host insurance. Been asked by myself, today I spoke with our team around other permits and whether or not they have a difficulty getting information, information around the insurance specific to these events from the same company. And they shared they do not. They've all had and received the same types of insurance from the get-go. So they're, I don't know and I'm not privy to the conversations that take place between Mr. Hamm and the insurance company. I have been responsive and provided the access and continued to clarify the kinds of information that would help. However, we are still at the same place where there is no insurance turned in for this application. There is insurance made available in order for the event to have open container. You would all have to pass this resolution or continue to hold until the insurance company receives it. Now, the event, as I understand, is on July 16th and 17th. It's coming up. Our next commission meeting is?
29th? Well, that's a that's a tough one. That's the 28th?
The 12th, July 12th.
That's Monday at Pride Week.
So that's five days in advance, four days in advance of the event. So either So either the insurance is purchased as a host or on the 12th, the commission would have to pass this ordinance. So you could table it again, waiting for the applicant to receive the insurance.
Mayor, could I ask a quick question?
Please go ahead.
So a question to the city manager or to the city attorney. So if, if the applicant were to get host, event host insurance, would the city still enforce open container for those who may be consuming beverages at the outdoor event? On the walking mall?
Be a mute, mute, mute point, right?
Correct. The, it would be a moot point because the applicant's mapped area covers three times the size that it had been in the past. So we're doing three blocks. Those, anyone on those blocks with an open container, if they're at the event or not, they would, they would be in and approved for
Right.
open containers. Now, this resolution as written would cover any event consuming alcohol in downtown. It doesn't limit the geography.
Okay, but it's your understanding that this event host insurance would give them what they need for the city to allow open container in that area?
Yes.
See, the attorney's shaking his head, so that must be true.
Yes, this is the last piece of the application. Today, they triple went back through all of the, the insurance Mr. Hamm provided, additional liability insurance information as, as required in the application. The only thing left is this open container insurance.
Is it open container insurance or it's?
It's a liability insurance specific to the event for alcohol consumption.
Mayor, Commissioners, that's correct. It's alcohol liability that rides over the top of their general commercial liability insurance. And, and would allow anybody in the designated area on the application to consume and possess open containers of alcohol.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have one written public comment that I can read into the record, and I have two hands raised at this time.
Please read it.
From Tyler Warren. Can you pass with the ability to suspend at the next commission meeting if insurance is not in place? Additionally, I have two raised hands, including in addition to Mr. Hamm himself.
So, yeah, so who's the first?
Sean Morrison.
Go ahead, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my comment is, I don't think the city's approach to this is logical in any way, sense, or form. If you, if you think about what the city attorney apparently has concluded is, if you have insurance, you don't need to get permission from the city to have open container anywhere in there's no reason to ask the city to void the current laws prohibiting open container. Well, if I owned a bar, I would just go out and get insurance to cover, you know, as much territory as I want in front of my bar, mark it off, and why would I even bother to come ask you guys at all? Because what you're saying is the insurance is what gives you open container. The city has nothing to do with it. That really makes absolutely no sense. And I think it shows that there's a fundamental misunderstanding between the city and the event organizers in this case about what they are trying to do. They're not trying to host an event like in front of a house as like a block party. They're trying to allow open container for the downtown core for multiple days. There is, it's a categorically different thing. And I think what I'm most upset about is, you know, this is the third city commission meeting that people have had to get on to provide comments. That is a broken process. It is an incredibly broken process. And the fact that the city staff, the city manager, whoever else, maybe it was Kev, I don't know who it was, couldn't facilitate a discussion to resolve this short of having three city commission meetings is an embarrassment to our city and certainly will be a cause for people not to come here to try to host events in the future. What I would say to you is, we need to find a way to have these conversations productively and conclusively so that we can reach decisions on these matters rather than constantly punting them and having more and more of our time wasted having discussions and a lot of back and forth dialogue that doesn't seem to be talking about the same request or the same type of thing.
Thank you. Who's next?
Apparently, Mr. Warren was the second hand raised, which I've written, I've read, read his written comment, excuse me, into the record. Would you like to hear from Mr. Hamm again?
Yes, if is, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So Mayor and Commissioners and Manager Harlan Shawk, I understand that everybody's goal is to do this and do this right. And that has been my goal the entire time because we have had events in the past, as I've said many times at these meetings, that have allowed open container to happen downtown illegally. All I want to do is protect my community as they come to town and make this a fully legal sanctioned function. When I've talked to the insurance people, I've said, hey, I have nothing to do with the sale of alcohol that's happening. I do want my space to be open container so that the businesses get the financial impact of me hosting this event downtown. In doing that, every single event insurance company that I've talked to has said that you don't need insurance on the alcohol because the liability for alcohol service still falls on the service from the bars that have the license to sell. They are fully insured for that for all parts of it, whether the person walks out, drives out, dances out, flies out. They are responsible for the alcohol they serve. And whether they go to a car, come to the open container space that I've determined for this that I'm asking for you to support me on, or whether they walk up the, the hill on the mountain, the person selling the alcohol still has the liability for the alcohol sale and things that come from it. So I understand that you're trying to protect the city, but at this point, the protectionist instincts of the staff have put us in a position where once again, we're coming up on the event and we're having to fight for the basics of all this is, is a party that my community is coming to town and spending a ton of money at. A ton of money that will go to the businesses downtown who have just had one of the worst years ever since the founding of the city. They have been fighting to stay alive. This event is an opportunity for them to have a financial windfall that makes a huge difference for them. We are asking you to support that. And I don't understand where it comes down to, oh, we can't have this thing because you aren't getting this other thing that doesn't even exist. Everything that I can find, and literally I just did the looking up now, everything I can find on hosting is if I'm having an event on my property and other people bring alcohol to it. And maybe that'll work for it. I don't know. But I still need this declared. Because I'm trying to make this town someplace that people come and visit, someplace that people come and celebrate. And I'd hope you would join me in that. This shouldn't be this hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jordan? I, I heard a comment from the first person there. What was it? Is, is that something we can do?
Mayor Collins, Commissioners, I didn't quite understand what the
Would you read the comment again, please, Madam Clerk?
From Tyler Warren. Can you pass with the ability to suspend at the next commission meeting if insurance is not in place?
So Mayor, Commissioners, I understand that to mean basically a conditional resolution that the resolution would be in effect if insurance is not obtained. Although I don't understand on what basis it is not obtained, because it's not available or because the applicant for the event who wants to have alcohol doesn't want to get it. And, and that's where I draw the line. I understand Mr. Hamm is saying he is just the event organizer. He is not providing alcohol. However, his event wants to have alcohol in his area for the celebration. I can't read the city code any other way other than to require alcohol insurance, perhaps. However, many licensed establishments want to apply themselves, but from what I have understood is some of them do not want to apply, and they are concerned that they will have liability for another establishment's service. So to answer your underlying question, yes, we could have a resolution contingent upon something else happening or not happening.
Mayor, may I just make, so just a comment. I mean, I, I appreciate the, the information from the staff. I think it's, it's unfortunate that the staff and the applicant weren't able to connect and have a conversation about this over the two-week period that we provided. But given that, my understanding is that we do have an option in front of us and we have an option, a recommendation to, to, to move this resolution suspending, you know, suspending the ordinance for a period of time. I, I spent some time prior to our last meeting, you know, looking to see what other municipalities have done. This is not in Montana, but I did find examples of other municipalities suspending their open container ordinance. And so I think it is, this is, this is a, a logical option. We, we've provided two weeks that I think we were hoping that we would see some other potential alternative provided. I think, given the time constraints that we're under, I'm comfortable moving forward with the resolution that we have in front of us that is narrow in scope and, and provides the opportunity for, you know, this, this significant event in our community to happen. So I, I just want to make that statement because I think, yes, we could make it contingent upon something, but I think we've got, we've got an option in front of us that staff has articulated that we could, that we could move forward with today.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to clarify, if you know, I, I sent the information to Mr. Hamm. He chose to contact the insurance company and make it foggy again. As a result, then we got into another back and forth. I, I just want to, I want you to understand truly that I'm not intending to make it more difficult for Mr. Hamm. I have and did provide the information. The city code is, is very clear of the expectations. I appreciate that it is a difficult decision to override what the city code is, which is why I had brought it to you as an option to allow the the passing of this resolution. If otherwise, I cannot tell my police officers not to enforce the law. That's the difficulty that is struck upon without doing either one. So I just wanted to make sure and clarify that point. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, a comment?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
It's going to be from left field. I apologize, but I guess I'm not going to be supporting this resolution this evening, and I'll tell you why. This resolution seeks to suspend portions of the Helena city code. And I'm uncomfortable with the idea of the suspension of the code. If we want to repeal, amend, or otherwise change the ordinance, there is process to do that. It stated in our bylaws that were adopted in June of 1977 and amended in March of 2015 that the purpose of those bylaws are to govern the internal operation and procedures of the commission and provide for the conduct of official meetings of the commission. In Article Two, Section One, General Rules, it states, "Commissioned to act by ordinance." "In addition to those actions required by law to be done by ordinance, the following acts of the commission shall be done by ordinance: A, adopting or amending an administrative code or establishing, altering, or abolishing any city department, office, or agency; B, providing for a fine or other penalty or establishing a rule or regulation for violation of which a fine or other penalty is imposed; C, granting, renewing, or extending franchises; D, regulating the rates to be charged by the city acting as a public utility; E, adopting with or without amendment ordinances; and F, amending or repealing any ordinance previously adopted. All other official actions of the commission may be taken by resolution or motion." Now, in our commission handbook, which was also amended in 2015, there's a multi-step process that describes the passage of an ordinance. This process to adopt an ordinance is there to ensure that we as a commission are deliberative and thoughtful when those ordinances are adopted or when they are changed. That process is also there to ensure that the public is fully aware and fully able to participate in action that is taken by their local government to change the laws that affect them, as is their right specifically granted by the Montana Constitution. So for those reasons and others, I won't be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the commission? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, just really briefly. One, I think that moving forward, I would be open to a conversation about what we need to permanently change the ordinance to, to facilitate future events. So we do have some consistency. The other thing that I am wondering about, and this was one of the budget amendments that I had brought for next week. So it's my understanding that Symphony Under the Stars doesn't have to do this because it is sponsored partly by this city. And I'm, so one of the budget amendments was helping the city sponsor Big Sky Pride moving forward. So this may not have to be an issue. And so that's a conversation I think it would be important for us to have moving forward. Obviously, this is happening in just a few short weeks, and we need to get a resolution. But I do think that it is incumbent upon the commission to make sure that we actually are finding a solution moving forward and not just, you know, trying to address these things as they are coming up and instead finding a more of a long-term solution. And I don't know if the city manager, is that, that's accurate, that if it was a city-sponsored event, this would not be necessary?
Thank you, Commissioner Dean. Yes, we could add it to the city's insurance as a sponsored event.
Okay. I'll entertain the motion.
Mayor, I'll move to approve a resolution suspending the prohibition of consumption of alcoholic beverages and possession of open containers of intoxicating beverages on city property within the downtown urban renewal district for events taking place on July 16th and July 17th, 2021.
Second?
Any final comments from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
No.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
Thank you. Consider a resolution amending Joint Resolution Number 10677 and counter-Resolution 1993-166 by extending the Helena Regional Airport Authority an additional 10 years. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I do believe that Jeff Wada Kemper is here as well from the authority. He is the representative, is the executive director of the authority and can provide any answers to any questions you might have. This resolution is the same resolution that the county will be introducing on their side, and I actually believe they may have already adopted to ensure the continuation of the authority for the next 10 years.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Do we have any comments or questions from the commission for Mr. Wada Kemper? Oh, you're getting off easy. Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk? Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, my name is Mike Murray. I'm your, one of your appointments to the Airport Board of Directors. In a past life, I had the good fortune to vote in favor of this joint Airport Authority Resolution twice. Resolution twice. At the time, my thought in voting in favor of the resolution is the city and county did not need another agency as big as the airport. But yet, in our authority, you have the authority to regulate and oversee what's going on at the airport. In the 20 years the Airport Authority has existed, they've presented both governments with clean audits. They have a relationship with the federal government. Most of, or all of the recent project of the new runway was funded by the federal government, not by local taxpayers. As your representative on the Airport Authority Board, I'm one of the individuals, the other individuals that represent you on the board, are pushing the manager to get the issue resolved that's outside of this action tonight. But as a city resident and taxpayer, I want the city to get all the money they're entitled to, and we'll see as long as I'm representing the city on the Airport Board that that will happen. Thank you for allowing me the time.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Do we have any other public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no written public comment and no raised hands at this time on light.
Any comments from the commission? I'll entertain a motion.
Actually, Mayor, can I ask a question to the city manager?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. So we've spent a fair amount of time on this topic, and we're just breezing through it tonight, but I do want to just acknowledge there's been a number of conversations, both the city-county meetings as well as our administrative meetings. So a question to the city manager, you know, we started this process with you conveying to us a desire to utilize this process in a way of sort of addressing some of these longstanding sort of issues or out, you know, outstanding items that just have gone unresolved. So what is your sense of the timeline on some of those things that we really haven't resolved? We're passing a 10-year resolution, I think, out of the request of the county primarily. What's the timeline for sort of thinking through, and how is that going to come back to this body, you know, at some point down the line?
Go ahead, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. This is an issue, the, there's, with regard to the assessments, both past and into the future, there is conversations taking place. We have scheduled a meeting. You all received an email from Mr. Wada-Kemper specific to those assessments that have not been paid and their position we don't agree with, so we'll continue to go through those conversations. And will, we have sought and are using outside legal to provide us with more input specific to the ramifications and what kinds of specific points of view we need to be evaluating on this. It's a technical issue. Neither of us are experts in airport authorities and all of the variety of FAA impacts. So it's been going on for three years, really, so my, the opportunity, though, that this presented is the opportunity for all of you to hear the same information. I think sometimes when we don't have an opportunity to share amongst the county as well as with the authority and others in the community what's been happening around the assessments and the work done in the city, it makes it difficult. So my hope is that we see resolution in the coming weeks, but my hope is that we can get there. It's really between, we still have more work to do. I can't actually give you a specific deadline on the previous assessments as well as moving forward, that, what that negotiation will look like. My hope is soon, I would love to see this done before September ultimately. But that does not mean, though, that the commission was not in support of the 10-year. At the joint city and county commission meeting, the opportunity was brought forward for you all to pass a two-year resolution as opposed to a 10-year resolution. The commission agreed with, at that time, with the county commission that it should be 10 years and not two years. The reason for the two-year period was to allow enough time to really study and evaluate the best method moving forward of assessing the amount of cost that the city invests into the property and its, and its management of streets across those, those airport lands, as well as leasing and other improvements that go on, on that property. That, at that time, the commission agreed with the county to make a 10-year resolution. So at this point, my hope is that we will resolve things faster than two years, but that was a potential reality, just given how, how much we have to get through by way of complexity on this issue.
Thank you. Madam Halschak.
I'll just say, Mr. Mayor, you know, this is one where I think the manager had it right with the suggestion of a two-year. You know, we, we've had a situation where an entity just chose to not pay assessments as required by law, right? No protest process, no following statute, just didn't remit payment. The only reason we're even talking about how we're going to reach this negotiation and figure it out in the future and come together in kumbaya and whatnot is because of this need for this resolution tonight, right? The moment we pass a 10-year, that's done. I hope, I'll, I'll be Pollyanna and say, I hope that we're all going to come together and resolve this issue, but the moment a 10-year is passed this evening and by the county, there is no further impetus for that actual solution, right? This has been going on for years, and no one has wanted to talk about it until the manager kicked the tires on this, plus this, this specific decision point came to us. That decision point is now a decade away. So I don't see how this solves that problem based on the conduct, unfortunately, since we've enjoyed a pretty nice symbiotic relationship with the airport over the years. I don't see how a 10-year solves that in this, in this circumstance, since it's sort of a, trust us, we'll solve it. But heretofore, there was, there was no sort of meeting, meeting to actually discuss it. It was just a flat no. So I think it's disappointing. I think the manager had a good idea on how we actually try to work towards a better solution going forward so that we can continue the healthy relationship we've always enjoyed with the Airport Board. And, you know, street maintenance funds are one of the biggest pieces that's being withheld here, right? We're going to have to have a discussion about raising the street maintenance rate coming up because of the items that we're talking about putting into the budget, say crowds at the schools, slip and falls. It's a voluntary sidewalk program. The way that assessment gets set is it gets levied on all property owners, right, in the city of Helena, residents, businesses. All of them will pay more because that assessment is currently unpaid. So this, this does increase costs on all of the residents in the cities if this goes unpaid, and the track record today is it will go unpaid. Two years would have given us that option, and I think the manager laid out a compelling case as to why to do that. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the commission? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'd move to approve a resolution amending Joint Resolution Number 10677 and County Resolution Number 1993-166 by extending the Helena Regional Airport Authority for an additional 10 years.
Second?
Any final comments from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
No.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
Thank you. Consider final passage of an ordinance adopting by reference the state-adopted 2018 edition of the International Energy Conservation Code by amending and adopting a revised Chapter 2 of the Title III Helena City Code. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution completes, and public hearing completes the adoption and the final passage of an ordinance to reference the state adoption of the 2018 editions of the IEC, the International Energy Conservation Code, and amending as well the adoption of those chapters within the city's code, Chapter 2, Title 3. And we have our team here to answer any questions from our building. I know that there was, sorry, a question or concern brought in that also our, our team is, Kim is here to answer specific to a section that we are not recommending be adopted as well. Mayor, if you would like to ask that further question of our team.
Thank you, Madam Halschak. Any comments or questions from the commission? You got off easy. Any public comments? Madam Clerk?
I do have one hand raised, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Susan?
Yes, hello. This is Susan Birkey. I reside at 545 South Harris. I'm an architect in Helena. Been in business here for 35 years. I also support the adoption of the 2018 I E C C and the wording in the ordinance to not, not adopt Appendix Chapter RA. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor. I have no other raised hands, and I've received no written public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Madam Halschak and Ms. Mack. I'll entertain a motion at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve first passage of an ordinance adopting the reference the state adopted.
A final?
Oh, nope. I'm on the wrong one. Is that correct? Yeah. Adopting by reference the state-adopted 2018 editions of the International Energy Conservation Code, I E C C, by amending and adopting or revise Chapter 2 of Title III Helena City Code, and set a public hearing date. Is that the old motion that's still in the? Oh, no, I am looking at the wrong one. Let me read you that. I'm really sorry. I was looking at the old one.
First, but this is final.
Yes, I was looking at the old one, sorry. Mr. Mayor, one more time, I will move to approve final passage of an ordinance adopting by reference the state-adopted 2018 editions of the International Energy Conservation Code by amending and adopting a revised Chapter 2 of Title 3 of the Helena City Code. Second?
And Mayor Collins, if I could, just to be clear, the commission is not adopting the state-adopted Appendix Chapter RA Solar Ready provisions.
Yeah, I mean, it says revise Chapter 2. I was wondering, that wasn't in the recommended motion, but it does say revise Chapter 2. Yeah.
Right.
That's where my confusion was coming from.
Okay. Was there a second?
Yes, I seconded it.
Okay. Do we have any final comments from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll take, the commission will take a 10-minute break. At this time, we'll take, the Commission will take a 10-minute break. Okay, consider, consider the first passage of the ordinance, oh, sorry, consider first passage of an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number 3097 and amending the official zoning map for the City of Helena for a zone change from downtown district to transitional residential district for Lot A being a portion of Lot H of the Plaza Mining Claim of Getchell and Child as shown on Certificate of Survey Number 3114987 with a street address of 739 Getchell Street in the City of Helena, Montana. Madam Manager, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the first passage of an ordinance that improves the district boundaries and zone change within the district to allow for higher density of development at the ground level, residential uses, and compatible commercial uses. It's in conformance with the growth plan and is consistent with future land use maps. In consideration of the conformance with the growth policy and state statutory requirements, the Commission, the Zoning Commission voted to recommend approval of this change. If you have further questions, I know there is a presentation, if you're interested, from our team and Ms. Ray, who was on our agenda earlier, and she's also available for questions should you have them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You have the floor.
Mayor Commissioners, so I will dispense with a number of the discussion topics because I do feel like City Manager.
Would you speak into the mic, please?
I mean now. That would be my problem. Thank you, Mayor. As I was saying, I will try to abbreviate my presentation in light of the information that the City Manager was able to provide you about this application. And if I can advance my slideshow. So, the property in question is one that you're probably familiar with in the downtown. It's to the east of Getchell Street between Stewart and Neal. It is surrounded by city-owned property to the west with the tennis courts and K Macanna Park, the Great Northern Town Center to the north, and south of it, there is a cell tower and some other offices. And to the east of it is the Federal Reserve Bank, notably the parking lot for that. And northwest of this property is actually an R3 residential district. So, this property is about 22,000 square feet in size. It currently has general retail sales use on it. It has a sign shop, but the rest of the parcel is arguably underutilized with just surface parking. And the applicant wants to change zone to transitional residential from downtown so that, again, they can have ground story residential on the property and also have commercial uses that front onto Getchell. So, it would, in essence, because of the differences between the two districts, have a lower overall density for it. So, it would help to create more of a transitional buffer between it and the R3 residential district that is near to it. And these are just some site photos. You can see the Great Northern Town Center, the Getchell parking garage, that is to the north of it, and to the northwest is where the R3 residential district starts. And then, again, the city-owned properties are across the street with K Macanna Park and the tennis courts. And then, again, south of it, you can see the cell tower, and you can kind of see the Federal Reserve Bank peeking between it and the current sign business. So, in reviewing this application, you're tasked with looking at whether it conforms with the growth policy and, generally speaking, with state statute also, that the zoning change serves the public health, safety, and general welfare, and that it essentially will create compatible urban growth and prevent blight. That is, in a nutshell, what you're tasked with looking at. This property is listed as being mixed use on the future land use map for the 2019 growth policy, and that is listed as a place where people can work, live, play, and learn, and has complementary uses that are well-integrated, denser development, and heightened walkability in the district. The downtown and transitional residential districts were established to address those things and also to promote the creation of more housing throughout the area. And the properties that surround it, with the exception of the city-owned ones, are all listed as mixed use in the vicinity as well. So, moving forward, this property is going to continue to be served by city services, and the city's, or its code that sets for its dimensional limitations and design standards for the district, as well as allowed uses, will help protect the public health, safety, and general welfare. There are very minute differences between the two districts in comparing them. Basically, with the transitional residential district with height, you can't exceed 36 feet. So, that massing is going to have a huge impact on the amount of density for the proposal with any development that comes through. There is a slight difference in residential parking, and relatedly, there were strong discussions when the districts were created so that there would be no casinos allowed in the transitional residential district, or medical marijuana dispensaries, bus terminals, vehicle-traded trade and service uses, whereas those would be permitted with the, in the downtown, with the exception of a casino, which could only be done with a CUP. And as has already kind of been implied in this discussion, another one of the big differences is that in the downtown district, you cannot have by right any residential uses. They have to be in upper levels, which is one of the reasons this application came forward. So, transportation systems and non-motorized travel are not expected to be impacted terribly by this. In fact, with respect to the rights of way and vehicle miles traveled, it's probably going to be less, again, because of the lower density. Any future development with the parcel is expected to be consistent with the surrounding developments and promote compatible growth, again, because the uses and design and dimensional standards between the two districts are very similar in nature. As far as public notice and comment are concerned, this application was noticed in the Helena IR before it went to the Zoning Commission on April 25th, and again, for this hearing this evening on June 6th. As of today, we've only received one comment, and it was in support of the application. It came from Jeff Downhour, an architect with Mosaic Architects here in town. He had some awareness of the project. And two of the big takeaways from his comments are that, you know, that this property, because it has a very steep grade change of about 30 feet on the eastern side as it dips down into that parking lot for the Federal Reserve Bank, and the fact that it only has access from Getchell as that one point of access, it makes it difficult to develop within the downtown standards, to an extent that it makes it, I would say, probably worthwhile useful for the community in a way. And part of the growth policy is to promote housing, and this would do exactly that. And he spoke to the fact that this would create a really nice transitional buffer as well with the R3 district. The Zoning Commission met on May 11th, and they unanimously voted three to zero to recommend first passage of an ordinance to rezone 739 Getchell from downtown to transitional residential district. In conclusion, staff finds that this proposal is consistent with the 2019 Helena growth policy and Montana zoning criteria. And the recommendation before you is to move to approve first passage of an ordinance amending the City of Helena Ordinance Number 3097 and amending the official zoning map for the City of Helena for a rezone chain, or, sorry, pardon me, a zone change from downtown district to transitional residential district for Lot A being a portion of Lot H of the Plaza Mining Claim of Getchell and Child as shown on Certificate of Survey Number 3114987 with a street address of 739 Getchell Street in the City of Helena, Montana. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions you may have. I also would like to note that the applicant is available to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Do we have any comments or questions from the Commission? Go ahead, Commissioner Loughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question from Ms. Ray. So, could you remind me, where does the R3, or no, the transitional, yeah, the transitional residential district begin? So, looking at that, the slide that you have up right there.
Mayor Commissioners, that district is not actually immediately adjacent to this property, to answer your question. It had been proposed for that R3 neighborhood, but owing to comments received from the residents there, and they actually signed a petition at the time that there were, there was the option to rezone them, it was taken out of the boundary. So, the nearest transitional residential district probably is going to be on the west side of Park, so south of Neal. Running along, actually, yes. I apologize.
And then I just have one other question. What, what's the precedence for, for changing a zone for just like one particular lot, you know? So, it seems like this will be like an island kind of amongst the downtown zone. So, I'm just wondering, like, what's the precedence for doing that across, across the city?
Mayor Commissioners, in answer to that question, I don't have an answer for you as far as whether there has been an instance where just one lot has been rezoned to another district that it's not immediately adjacent to. But if you would like, I can speak to what legally constitutes spot zoning as a concept in the state of Montana. I had contacted the Deputy City Attorney Eric Coat, who conferred with City Attorney Joden about whether or not this met the test of being spot zoning. So, in looking at the little case, which I can't remember the year that that was handed down, I want to say the early 90s, they set forth a three-factor test where, generally speaking, all three factors have to be met in order for it to be deemed spot zoning. The first is that whether the requested use is significantly different from the prevailing use in the area. The second being the area in which the requested use is to apply is rather small. But Eric, in his analysis, did state that this factor is more concerned with the number of separate landowners benefited by the requested changes than is the actual size of the area benefited. And the third and final test is that the requested change is more in the nature of special legislation, meaning that it is designed to benefit only one or a few landowners at the expense of the surrounding landowners and the general public. And in reviewing those factors and reviewing the facts of this case, it, the City Attorney's Office deemed that this does not meet spot zoning. And further to that, there was another opinion that was handed down by the State Supreme Court in mid-May that talks about spot zoning, and it really hinged on whether the proposed land use change, the zoning designation, was going to conform with the growth policy. And as has been presented to you tonight, that in this instance, it does meet with the growth policy.
Great. Thanks. Sounds like you're ready for law school.
I completed about a year of it, and that was plenty. Thank you.
Well, well done. So, I guess a follow-up question, Mayor, just on, you know, I'm just trying to think about how, I think all of the reasons behind rezoning this makes a lot of sense. I guess what I'm curious about is what happens if we get another applicant next adjacent to it, and then another, like, you know, we had a plan, right, for what this, what this downtown zone would, would look like, and ideally, the type of development. So, I'm just curious, how, how do future commissions then sort of weigh the extent to which we're potentially sort of rezoning, you know, plot by plot? Do you anticipate that type of thing? Or, I mean, maybe talk a little bit about what the, what we could potentially anticipate into the future in this area?
Mayor Commission, I do think that this case is a little unique in the sense that, again, the area had been considered for rezoning very nearby to change the density of the existing residential district. And there was, at one time, the potential for a conversation with the individuals in that neighborhood to consider increasing that density and allowing for some commercial uses that might be compatible. So, I see this as sort of tying into that. But as, with respect to any other parcels across the community that maybe could be rezoned and, you know, not meet all three factors from the little case, you know, it's hard to say. I haven't, in my time with the city, encountered other properties where that's necessarily been considered. You know, there was one where we were, we had a pre-application meeting to discuss it, and it was in the vicinity of the Capitol. And in that instance, somebody was wanting to create an office where currently there is residential uses. And at that time, it, it might not have, we didn't review it through the lens of the spot zoning case, but I bring this up because in that instance, it was strongly encouraged to the applicant to do some pounding of the pavement and actually talking to the neighbors to see if they would be amenable to rezoning because of the way that that neighborhood is changing and it too being designated like this property as mixed use and how that has an impact on the overall area. So, we would have to still review it through the lens of the growth policy and through the state criteria, and with an understanding to whether it would constitute spot zoning or not. It's hard to say, you know, whether we'll get another application tomorrow or in a year's time or five years. That would be for an individual parcel. That would be for an individual parcel to make that comment, but that's sort of how I consider it.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Do we have any other comments from the commission?
I have a question, and I don't know if Ms. Ray can answer this or maybe the applicant. And in here, it discusses, obviously, that higher density, mixed use. But I'm wondering if you can maybe talk about, like, what the vision for the property is if this is adopted?
Absolutely. Mayor and commissioners, I would defer to the applicant to flesh out anything beyond what I can share, but my understanding is that there's an intention to, along the Getchell frontage, so the western portion of the property, to have a commercial structure, which would probably be a couple stories in height because of the height limitation of 36 feet. And then sort of where you see the, I don't know how well you can make them out on your screen, but there are five little orange dots sort of north of where the vehicles are parked on the vicinity map image. And I believe that that is where they're intending to create some sort of condos, residential condos.
I wonder, Mayor, if the applicant might be able to flesh out?
Do we have the applicant?
Her name is Bridget Butler.
There she is. Thank you, Ellie. Just a moment, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead, Ms. Butler.
Ms. Butler, you have the floor. You have a question for her, Commissioner?
I'm wondering if she can talk a little bit about what the vision for the property is if we adopt this.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Butler.
Okay. Mayor, commissioners, our vision for this property is, like Ellie stated, it's mixed use with the business and either condos or townhouses, some housing in the downtown area. And we'd like to do something, we've owned the property since 2013, and we've done some upgrades to it since then. I know, I don't know if anybody saw this lot before we purchased it, but it didn't have anything on it. And we would like to continue to upgrade it and provide housing to the downtown area, which I think is critical. And it's in a great location for walkability and trails and downtown restaurants and just adding to the downtown character.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Do we have any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, from Ms. Ray, so is the requirement that there be commercial on the first floor, is that in the downtown zoning code?
Yes, mayor and commissioners, that is the case.
So could the applicant have gone through a variance process to request a waiver of, or essentially a variance from that requirement as an alternative route to, to achieve the same result?
Mayor and commissioners, that wouldn't have been possible to still meet the letter of the code and have ground floor residential uses because the variances can only be provided to the, I believe it's six off the top of my head, sections of the city code that the Board of Adjustments can actually review and make a determination on. There was the ability to have administrative adjustments made for design standards that fell outside of the purview of the Board of Adjustments, but with respect to the placement of uses, that wasn't a consideration.
So we have to rezone in order to let this happen?
Yes.
So I saw you had a couple of notes on the differences in the codes themselves. Is there, for the downtown or the transitional residential, is there a setback difference between downtown and the transitional?
Mayor and commissioners, only in instances where it's abutting a residential district with, which this one will not be.
So is it still zero?
Yes.
Okay. And then is there a, is there a, does that preclude the use of or the placement of a parking lot or driveway adjacent to the, the right of way?
Yes, in this instance, I mean, they would still be required to meet all of the parking requirements from Chapter 9 of Title 11 pertaining to parking placement and access to the site. So that won't be any, there won't be any difference with respect to that. And I think in this case, they're going to have tuck under garages. But really, it's, with respect to that, you know, they just have to make sure that they're able to get emergency access to the site, which shouldn't be a problem because of the depth of the lot going in.
I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, right, one of the goals of the downtown code was to push development to the edges and avoid this sort of historic Helena practice of putting front parking on everything and driveways directly in, impeding sidewalks. So are they going to have to put these sort of tuck unders behind the buildings like we've seen from some, we've seen some downtown townhomes that are, the parking goes in the back, either off the alley, or there's one shared driveway that you access, and we've seen others that have a driveway right off the street and then sufficient room to park multiple vehicles. And so you have these situations of cars blocking the right of way, cars crossing the sidewalk in multiple places. Is this one, at least as of now, you know, going to keep to that sort of development push to the street, parking behind, or does this zone change, change that in any way?
Mayor and commissioners, I, I don't believe it's the intention of the property owner to have any street-facing parking whatsoever. So I believe that what they're proposing, though I haven't seen a site plan, would conform with what is required in Chapter 9. And that, I, I am making an assumption here, and I would defer to Bridget on this, but I believe that the tuck under garages would be accessed via the front in part because of the site limitations that they have with only having that one access point to get into the interior of the property and also because of that steep grade change. And I think that as you see those five little orange dots, that that's actually where those condos are going to be placed on the parcel. If I'm not mistaken, Bridget's already worked with the county addressing coordinator on that placement of those units on the parcel, but she can hopefully explain that further if needed.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Commissioners, Mayor, our, our plan is to have tuck under garages. We would have an access kind of along the parking garage and then a roadway for access down the middle so that they could drive through, and then the garages would tuck under, under like the basement floor, where they would park. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Do we have any other, do we have any public comments? Thank you, Ms. Do we have any on the line?
Mr. Mayor, I have one hand raised at this time. Brian Ober.
You have the floor, Brian.
Yes, Mayor and commissioners, kind of going back to our earlier comment, this is a tract of land that's somewhat underutilized. It's in a kind of an odd area of the city, very well located. And somewhat going back to the conversation about the TIF districts, this is one of those that is going to create taxable value and housing. It's just unfortunate because of the layout of the, of the lot that you can't have office or resident or retail space on the first floor and then residential every place else. This really does feel like it's trying to drive to the essence of what we were doing with the downtown master plan and the rezoning. It's just one of those odd lots just because of that physical makeup of the lot that this, this is a nice and kind of an elegant solution and does drive taxable value down into the downtown area and into housing, which is greatly wanted in the downtown area.
Thank you, Brian. Any other public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I just have one more question from Ms. Ray, following up on the variance question. So does that mean anytime a developer at this point, as far as we can see, who believes that maybe the commercial space isn't going to be viable in that location in the downtown zoning district, goes onto some streets where there might be some trepidation about putting a, a commercial business, or it might be a questionable venture? We're going to have to rezone every single one of those if, if the commission, this commissioner in the future wants to permit that, there's no way to do it, where we keep the downtown zoning but provide some kind of variance. We're just going to have to kind of keep doing little zone changes throughout the district. Is that right?
Mayor and commissioners, as the code currently reads, that would likely be the case. And owing to the topographical variations, I would say, that exist within the downtown, it's conceivable that there's another parcel that might have some of these limitations associated with it that could impede the kind of use of the property that we would hope to see within the downtown code.
Thanks.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve first passage of an ordinance amending City of Helena ordinance number 3097 and amending the official zoning map for the City of Helena for a zone change from DT Downtown District to TR Transitional Residential District for Lot A being a portion of Lot H of the plaster mining claim of Getchell and Child as shown on certificate of survey number 3114987 with a street address of 739 Getchell Street in the City of Helena, Montana.
Second. Any final comments from the commission? It's moved and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Olafman.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a 2,500 square foot sexually sexually oriented business used in the Commercial Light Manufacturing zoning district at 3540 Centennial Drive in the City of Helena. Madam Hollis-Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought I, I saw Mr. McConnell trying to run, so I said, nope, keep coming. So wanted to make sure that this last item, there are a couple key points about it that Mr. McConnell will share with you, but of great importance, the commission's zoning board approved this conditional use permit with conditions, which he'll share more about, and also answer any questions that you may have further. He also has provided some history around these kinds of businesses licensed within the city as part of the cover sheet on this presentation as well, so you can offer up more questions to him as you find them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and commissioners.
Turn the microphone on, please.
Is this better?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So like the city manager said, we're here for a conditional use permit, 3540 Centennial Drive. I think it's important to briefly look over the review criteria, just so it's fresh in everyone's mind as we move forward with this item. So on the left are the review criteria, on the right are how those are utilized or interpreted. So just some general information about this particular property and proposal. This is for an admin eve retail store. That's of course classified as a sexually oriented business, and it is allowed by a CUP in the CLM district only. The former use in this location was as a CrossFit fitness studio. As you can see from the vicinity map, this is a primarily industrial area with a heavy equipment dealer, a home builder, an industrial, sorry, an engineering firm as well. So there are very few changes associated with this other than the use, no changes to the structure, the land, or the existing zoning. Currently, Helena does not have any sexually oriented businesses within its borders, and based on city records, there have been no applications or approvals since at least So like I just mentioned, the, the ingress egress circulation for all types, whether it be vehicular, pedestrian, or bicycles, will not change the number of spaces, 15 with one ADA space, and they provide that both onsite and in the right of way. The reason for the strike throughs here is those are part of the zoning commission's, zoning commission's conditions, which we'll get to in a moment. So the separate sign permit is required, which comes about at the building permit stage where I'll ensure that these conditions, if, if moved forward, will, will be adhered to. As you can see in the photo on the top, there is minimal landscaping that will be maintained with no changes proposed. There are no screening requirements, this is adjacent to residential, and there are no changes to the proposed, no changes proposed to the existing lighting. It's worth mentioning that across the street is a fairly significant commercial area with some residential in it. To the southeast is Mountain View Meadows, although it's, is a substantial distance So the CUP, as it relates to the other review criteria, there are no adopted neighborhood plans, although this CUP would be supported by the growth policy in, in the fact that it's a infill type situation, adapter of use type situation. The current structure does meet all of the zoning dimensional standards for the CLM district. The hours of operation as proposed by the applicant, 10 a.m. to 10 p.m., and that will be adjusted, you know, as necessary. This use is expected to create less noise than the current CrossFit studio that has some of its operations out, outside. Glare and odor are not expected to change as a result of the approval of this CUP. There were five comments received, as you can see, three of which were in opposition based on, you know, moral concerns. One on the perceived evaluation of property, and then one didn't really care but expressed their comments nonetheless. As part of the review process for this CUP, comments, no comments received from departments, and that includes the HCC. As the manager said, the zoning commission did make a unanimous recommendation to conditionally There was a, an error in the memo. My apologies for that. It is a 5,000 square foot building, and this use will, it'll be incorporated into the entire building versus just one of the units. So move to approve a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a 5,000 square foot sexually oriented business use in the Commercial Light Manufacturing zoning district at 3540 Centennial Drive in the City of Helena with the following conditions. Condition one, stripe all parking spaces within the existing paved area, including a van accessible ADA space. No, condition two, no future expansion of the use or the structure will be allowed as part of this permit. Condition three, no pole-mounted signage. And condition four, limit the total square footage across all signs on the property to no more than 200 square feet. Thank you very much, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time. Also, I believe the applicant's representative is available to address any concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I did have a question.
Please.
Ms. McColl, I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about the rules around the signage? And I read the minutes, and obviously, see the condition here about the no pole-mounted signage, but I'm wondering if you can maybe explain what some of the terms mean and what would be allowed now under that 200 square feet space?
Sure. Are there any terms specifically that you had in mind?
I mean, I'm thinking no pole-mounted signage is what it sounds like, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, exactly. There would be an opportunity to have a billboard type sign. I mean, they're allowed 300 square feet in the CLM, so that's, that's fairly large, and that was a concern expressed at the zoning commission meeting, not only by a member of the public, but also by the commissioners themselves. So that's why they decided to limit pole-mounted signage as well as the overall square footage. They still would be allowed to have a rooftop sign or a monument sign, a banner perhaps on the building, which is currently there for CrossFit. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I'm also wondering, does that, would that include like backlit signs?
I expect it would. The 200 square feet, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So condition number two says no future expansion of use or structure will be allowed as part of this permit. Can you talk a little bit about that relative to the use as proposed now? If, in the memo, it says the applicant proposes to use the existing 2,500 square foot building for a retail store which sells clothing, toys, videos, novelties, et cetera. So that's the use. Is that accurate?
Correct. As I understand, Adam and Eve stores, that's accurate, yes.
And so the condition number two is that will be the use into the future?
Yeah, no additions to the structure. There, there are no expansion opportunities, I guess, within the existing structure. It's worth noting that the change from 2,500 to 5,000, the square footage was not presented to the zoning commission. It was the use, right? So they weren't necess, they weren't approving a 2,500 square foot use. They were approving a sexually oriented business in this location.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
So the, as, as we read the definition of the sexually oriented business, it seems broader than the proposed use significantly and they're not anticipating changing their use, correct?
I do not believe so, although you're correct. It is much broader.
You do have the applicant on, right?
Yes, sir.
Maybe we can refer to the applicant, Commissioner?
Thank you.
Do we have the applicant on?
His name is Tyler Warren.
I, I do, in fact, Mr. Mayor, just a moment.
Commissioner, you be willing to ask your question today?
Certainly, yeah. Thank you.
This is Tyler Warren and I'm the representative for the applicant. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner.
Good evening. We have a commissioner has a question for you.
So, Mr. Warren, did you catch my question earlier or should, would you like me to restate it?
I believe that I caught your question earlier. There has been no discussion of any other use outside of what is presented and that is a novelty adult bookstore, videos and lingerie, which is, is kind of borderline on what, I guess, how you can interpret sexually oriented business. There's no, there's no contact or other humans on the site other than to sell merchandise.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Warren. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
Just a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor. So with regard to the signs and if you wanted to defer to the city attorney, what's the situation with the signs and the fact that we're limiting them because we're talking about sexually related business? And where does that fall in our spectrum of questions on signage and content? I know we've got commercial speech involved. We've got to read that sign in order to determine whether or not this business is stating something, right, that for some people is clearly a moral question? So where does that fall on our ability to restrict signs, shrink those signs, tell that business you don't get the same rights as everyone else in the district because morally we, we wag our finger at you?
I'll, I'll defer that to the city attorney. I'll say this, though, there was discussion at the zoning commission meeting that signs of that size are obtrusive no matter what they say?
100% agree, but we let everybody else do it and that's, and I understand the applicant has said we'll abide by the limitations and that's cool, but I just want to know, are we, are we saying, you know, sexually oriented businesses in Helena always get a one-third reduction?
Yeah, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Halliday, that's, that's exactly the concern. And while you came up with condition three, which is, as I view it, a regulation of the, the type of sign, not necessarily the content of the sign. It is, I, I agree, it lends one to question why we're placing the condition, but it is a CUP for which the applicant has asked the city commission for and my understanding has agreed to the, to the condition. I know in the past, the zoning commission and the city commission has expressed general concern with the amount of pole mounted signs out there on that highway corridor. And if, I don't know if you were around, Commissioner, might have been right when you started on the commission, we actually had a lawsuit with the new Nissan dealership at the time and ultimately the district court overturned the Board of Adjustments decision to deny a second sign variance for their Nissan trucks versus their Nissan sign. So I think it's consistent with the, the city's general goal that we're trying to limit the amount of pole signage out there.
Thank you.
If I could, Mayor Commissioners, the applicant also recognizing their application and proposed a smaller than what would normally be allowed sign allocation initially.
Okay.
May I speak to that, Tyler Warren?
What was your outreach to the community next door?
This CUP application went through the standard notification process.
And what is that?
That is mailers, the posting in the newspaper for both zoning commission and city commission.
And you got only five comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Warren, the representative does have his hand raised.
Good, Mr. Warren, you have the floor.
Okay, I just wanted to state several, thank you again for, and Mr. Mayor, I would like to state just several of the, the benefits that I, I see in filling this space with a tax-based retail center. One is the economic impact. It will be a taxpayer in the city and it will employ sales staff. They will clean up the building and landscaping around the building. Currently, it's a, a CrossFit gym and the landscaping is maintained but minimally and especially at the back of the lot, there's a lot of weeds and, and noxious weeds, I guess, that I noted onsite. There's also some damage to the building previously, which my client is intending to repair or have repaired during this process of purchasing the building. Currently, they are located in most municipalities throughout the state of Montana and one of the concerns was whether or not there was an economic impact and to surrounding businesses as well as a, a devaluation both morally and just generally around these stores. And as an example, there are three different large cities in the state of Montana, Billings being one of them, who just had about a $2.5 million gas station built across the street from, from this one. It's had, from the Adam and Eve location in Billings, Montana, it's had steady growth of residential uses in a similar proximity to Mountain View Meadows. In fact, they're higher than the median in, higher than the median home prices in that area. And then in Great Falls, where the Adam and Eve store is located, there's an attorney and brewery that have just done, taken on a gentrification project where they're introducing 18 more residential, high-end residential condos as well as retail space on the main floor. In Missoula, Shields has selected the lot right next door to Adam and Eve for their new store in, in Missoula. And currently across the street, they are doing a revamp of their old Hastings for new retail.
Mr. Warren, please wrap up.
Yep, sorry. So I'm just saying that there are positives. Basically, the concern that was raised before, I don't believe is, is a valid concern. And in fact, these guys are discreet. They're a national chain and they're very professional. They're not here to pull anything, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Do we have any other public comments, Madam Clerk?
My apologies, Mr. Mayor.
That's fine.
No, at this time I have no other, no other written public comment.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, if I could before, I think after looking at this now probably for the fourth or fifth time, condition two, and I think this, what made me think of it was Commissioner Logan's line of questioning is perhaps condition two might be tightened up to restrict this use since the definition of sexually oriented business includes more than just a retail sale. I'm thinking, you know, we want to, perhaps the commission wants to limit the conditional use permission just to retail so as to exclude the other possibilities on the, under that definition. Most notably, I think exotic dancing is probably the, the item that would, could potentially fall under that definition.
Okay, thank you. So, um, what's the next step here, Mr. Jordan?
I think if the commission so desires a motion, motion as recommended or whatever the commission chooses to do, but if it does want to move to approve with the conditions that B be amended, no future expansion of the use or structure is permitted nor a change beyond retail.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll give it a shot. Somebody's got to do it. Uh, okay. So I will move to approve a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a 5,000 square foot sexually oriented business use in the commercial light manufacturing zoning district at 3540 Centennial Drive in the City of Helena with the following conditions. A, applicant shall stripe all parking spaces within the existing paved area, including a van accessible space. B, no future expansion of the use or structure is permitted under this permit beyond the existing retail use. C, no pole mounted signage and D, no more than 200 square feet of total signage on the property. Second?
Any final comments from the commission?
Yeah, just one from me, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I'm, I'm in support of this and I appreciate that the applicant has restricted their sign usage, but I, I will say we're sort of, you know, we hear the word sex and we immediately have to go and limit, limit the signs and, you know, we get casinos in, we ask the casino, what are you going to do? You're going to put up an obnoxious sign? They say, no, 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 of course not. And then, of course, the casino gets built and we get a 30-foot pole mounted sign that screams off into the night because they're allowed to. Moral picking and choosing here, terrible idea on this one. We're doing it, they're agreeing to it, but this, this is a specific content restriction on this store because of the word sex and we're all like getting, getting all nervous and twittery, so just, just saying it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
I mean, you're welcome to amend the motion.
No, 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 they've agreed to do it. Any final comments from the commission? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk, do we have anybody online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I, I do have one hand raised. It is Tyler Warren.
You want us to withdraw the motion?
No, I don't. I don't. I wanted to just, I wanted to, I know, it's time to go home. I just wanted to make one, one final statement. We did request a 200 square foot signage for the entry sign at the recommendation of, when we were applying at the zoning level, saying that that was going to be one of the hurdles to overcome and that if we wanted to get approval, that that was probably a concession that we should start with, just to, to get a little bit more traction. But it was our understanding that the signage, the 200 square feet was specifically allocated to only the, the either pole sign or monument sign and not included in the building sign. But I think that that will be clarified in the application for the sign.
I think it's clarified already.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
You bet.
Great night.
Is there any other com, uh, go ahead. Is there, is there anybody from the public wishes to address the commission online, Madam Clerk?
I do have, well, this is an additional comment by Mr. Warren. I believe it just follows up to what he just said. We agreed to the 200 foot sign, sorry, at the entry. Other than that, I have no other written comment and no raised hand.
Anybody in the chamber wants to address the commission? All right. At this time, this meeting is adjourned.